Again, if you would like to speak during tonight's meeting, there is a sign up sheet on the table here in the center of the room to the side. If you would like to address during that portion of the meeting, if you would sign up, that would be appreciated.
Good afternoon and welcome to the town council meeting on Monday, July the twenty eighth of the year twenty twenty five. The time now is six oh two P M. We'll call to order, Mr. Driggers, would you mind, sir, calling the roll?
Councilmember Paige.
Here.
Councilmember Brock.
Here.
Councilwoman Tripp.
Here.
Councilmember Hendrick.
Here.
Mayor Slough.
Present, thank you, sir. Was the meeting posted according to state law?
Yes, sir, it was.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda tonight as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Page, looking for a second.
Second.
Second made by Mayor Proton Brock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, thank you. At this time, please join Councilwoman Page for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation this afternoon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll bow your heads if you wish to. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. Let us have a great productive meeting, civil meeting, as well as, dear Lord, please watch out for our children who start school next week. And please, dear Lord, look over everybody who works out in this heat. And, um, thank you so much for allowing us to do your good works. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Page. At this time, we will pause for a moment. If there's any members of council that wish to make remarks, we'll pause at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Proten.
Um, young lady in the audience, her name is Cortina Ricketts. She did sign up to speak, but since our public comment is only on items on the agenda, I would request that we allow her a couple of minutes. She wants to address the council and has some plans.
Yes, sir. Yep, I did see that. Cut your, cut your at the top of the mic. Just hold it.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, members of the council. I'm here today to present gifts from Kelly Solar Generation. Kelly Solar Generation is a nonprofit organization that aims to increase STEM and STEAM education and reduce energy dependency from sources outside of the school district. Today, we present you with succulents because they are easy to grow, maintain, and are incredibly resilient. Keep them by a window, but not in direct sun. Water it every two, one to two weeks. Okay? We chose these gifts because we want to implement a propagation lesson into your classrooms. This will promote hands-on science learning, responsibility and patience, environmental awareness, problem-solving skills, and social and collaborative learning. Our business cards are located in the box with your gifts, and I hope you have a spot for them at your home or your work. I hope you consider the propagation lesson to boost STEM and STEAM education.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Um, if you would, just, you can sit on right there by our attorney. Um, and as we discussed when I met you, please feel free to reach back out to us. We have your business cards. That way, we have a lot of greenery here in the park, so we definitely, I think, all of us want to keep green space accessible. So whatever you can, you or your students can do to enhance the green space here in Doco Meadows Park, we gladly appreciate it. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from members of council? Councilwoman Page.
Um, just wanted to, I haven't had an opportunity to send a recap email from the municipalities conference last week, you know, the week before. And, um, you know, one of the things that I always look forward to, and this is just my second one that I've been to, but it's actually looking over and hearing and seeing the achievement awards that is awarded by the municipality for, um, various towns and cities that have, at different size level, that have implemented things for the good of their community. And in their descriptions or recaps of, you know, what projects did they do, how did they do it, how long did it take? Also, where did the money come from? And so it's always great to see what other towns are doing so we can capture that type of information and, um, and look forward to try and, you know, capture that same type of money and implement that for our town as well. So. So perhaps sometime this week, I'll be able to provide that recap. And, um, and then there's also one other thing. The municipality association also has changed one of their, one of their funds, a grant fund, and they've actually got a, they have, um, put it into two different categories. One is in just, you know, maintaining status quo with regards to what a town may have. Another one is the big idea. So, um, that's at a hundred thousand dollars. But, um, so I'll be providing some information with regards to that and some ideas for how we might be able to apply for that. So, thank you.
Cool deal. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Councilwoman Page? Thank you, ma'am, again. Any further discussions from any other members of council? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Hearing none. We'll move to the mayor's remarks. Just make sure, um, it saddens me when anyone passes away, but, um, to learn the news of Ms. Melody Chastain, passed away over the weekend. Keep her and her family in your prayers. Any contributions can be made to the regional county humane society in her name. And these are my comments. Next on the agenda is the town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A couple of items to make you aware of. First, a couple of calendar items. Surprise, surprise, there's a, there's a little election going on tomorrow. So, um, obviously, there is, uh, the polls will be open tomorrow from seven A M. to seven P M. For a special election regarding the referendum on the form of government that'll be taking place tomorrow. Also want to make sure on your calendar that you have, uh, that you have placed the event of August seventh. That is the Purple Heart Day Dinner. Uh, and so it's a tradition here in the community. That'll be taking place on August the seventh at five P M. You should have received information by email regarding that dinner. All that we ask is that if you plan to attend, if you will, please let us know if there's any guests attending with you, if you'll let us know that as well. We'll make sure that we have that recorded. So, um, look forward to, uh, look forward to that annual event here in the community and hope that your schedules will allow you to participate as well. So, a couple of calendar items. Couple of activity things that I need to share with you. Um, one of those, um, is that I have just completed a cell phone audit. And so if you're, nice fancy way of checking the numbers and seeing who they're assigned to. And so, um, you may have actually gotten a phone call from me or someone that's, that is, I was kind of working through that, but the finance, uh, finance staff was a great asset in helping get that completed. And so as, as we're working through that, we are identifying there are some of our staff members that it would be appropriate for us to provide, um, that as a tool for doing their jobs. And so that's one of the reasons I just needed to review what we have, how it's being used, um, and to, to, to that effect. And so as a, as a, just as a point of information, uh, I had at least one council member who indicated that the phone wasn't needed for personal, you know, for business use and provided that back to us. Not to make any secrets of that, that was Councilmember Brock, uh, who said, you know, hey, if another, if somebody on staff can use it, then I'm going to turn this one in so that can be done. And so we just want to make sure those who need the tools have the tools they need to do their respective assignments. Um, and so that's, that's what we're trying to take a look at on that. Uh, also, um, I want to let you know that the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, we, we now have all the data entered for that. Uh, it is my intent for us to go and make sure we get all of that posted, that you have copies of that. Uh, but, but I've made a decision that I want to reformat that a bit. None of the data changes. Uh, I just think that there are some improvements that we can make to the format. I get a little lost in the budget sometimes where I'll have a drop down box that we may or may not have approved. And then that drop down box, the total goes over to a line item somewhere else. All of the data that we used as, um, as supporting documentation for the budget, that is good for the budget process. But it's not necessarily that valuable as, as, as we publish the budget and that we are using it. It, it's a, it's a working, breathing document that particularly we as staff use every single day. And so to that point, I've met with all of our staff, particularly with our staff members who have departmental management responsibilities. We are extending responsibility for that budget to those individuals as well. One, we want to make sure that if there is an expenditure and it's being charged to an operational area, that the person who's responsible for that operational area should be aware of that. And so when we, so we make those entries, they are aware. And if they, if they have an opinion that it should be charged to a different line item, they have the opportunity to identify that. We, we, you know, we do business pretty normal, as in we kind of know, you know, every month, the power bill gets charged to that line item. Every month, the phone bill gets charged to that line item. But sometimes there's discretionary, um, decisions that have to be made relative to where something is charged. And I want to make sure that if our staff is being held accountable for staying within their allocated budgets, that they also have a say so, uh, in that. So I am asking that they're doing reviews of that on a monthly basis. If we've made a mistake on the entry side of it, if they identify that mistake, then then we have an obligation to reverse that entry and get it correct. So I'm involving those folks much, much more than perhaps they've been involved in the past. And so what is also happening with that is I am also implementing a purchase order system for our budget as well. Now, that will only apply to those items that are not routine, normal expenditures. Again, every month, the power bill comes in, it gets charged to the power bill line item. We don't need to create a work order to pay the power bill. We don't need to create a work order to pay the insurance premiums. And there are just general operating expenditures that we do not need purchase orders for. So I'm establishing with them what that really should look like. And what I'm really saying to them is expenditures that are out of the norm of our day-to-day operations, those expenditures should be requested and approved prior to expenditures being made. And I've got great support at the staff level with folks understanding why I'm asking you to do that. And so we're in the process of implementing that as well. July was a transition month for us, and so it really, it didn't happen in July, but as we start August, uh, that will be our process. And in that way, we really are able to, uh, to pre-approve expenditures so that there is no question of, of what it should be charged to, what we anticipate the amount to be, and what is the use of the expenditure. Um, it's a, it's a very standard way of doing business. But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna implement that and we have, again, have great support and buy-in from our folks. So as I, as I finish this reformatting and we get that in place, I'll be distributing to you electronic copies of those so that you see exactly what we're working off of. Uh, and then, uh, we, we take seriously the responsibility that as we reconcile, um, those budget reports, you know, typically, you know, at the end of the month, it takes about three weeks to be able to get all the entries recorded and everything done, uh, print the reports and get those to you. But our commitment is to make sure that at each of your meetings, you will have the report for the prior month. And you'd have an opportunity to review that. Any questions about the new budget and how that'll kind of shake out? I don't think there's any drastic changes for us, but.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of questions, if I may. I, I appreciate the reformatting of the budget, making it easier. What, what is your goal for a posting cycle? What I mean by that, if you get a bill on a Monday, is your goal to have that bill coded and posted by?
The following week.
The following week, seven days.
Yeah, we, we, we typically are able to process, unless there's a question or there's any disagreement, but I, I typically receiving and the check literally going out the door typically happens in a ten-day cycle.
Okay, great. And then I know business license is a source of income.
Yes.
And so I'm, on the income side, business license and, and the various franchise fees and which most are paid either quarterly, semi-annually, or annually. How are we balancing back income? Is there a way to do that? Whether by business license fee, facility rental fee, so we can come in on Monday, events that have happened the prior week? Do we know, so on the deposit side, how is that?
Yeah, um. I, I will, I will say, um, that the, we do not have a good system in place relative to that. So when we're talking about rentals in this facility or a picnic shelter or a picnic table or the amphitheater, whatever that may be, the, the software that we use allows the staff here in this facility to record that event. They're able to, you know, they, they, it's recorded when it occurs. We know it's coming up. We schedule our staff. But there is not a link between that software and our accounting software that, that, through QuickBooks and, and, and the, the system that we use for scheduling, it, it, it doesn't track one to the other. And, and so we are investigating different software for the purposes of scheduling and working here. We know that we're in the, the process of reviewing, uh, some other type of financial software, what that may look like for us. But, but there's a disconnect. And, and, and so I'm looking for a remedy, um, that, that clearly shows, it would be like a due to account, that it really is, uh, you know, that this is, this has occurred. A deposit has not been made, and so because there's not a deposit, we should be seeing accounts receivable for that. And I should be able to record those receivables.
Within, within the same, the same allotted timeline that you would post the bill.
Well, you know, that, that, I think it's going to be a little longer than the ten day on that side. That, I think, is probably going to be probably more of a thirty day cycle. And the reason for that is that we make a refund of deposits. And so, um, I'm, I'm, I've, I've held the event.
So it's a true deposit.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've held the event, and now after the event, we've inspected the facility. We determine, yes, there's damage, and this is what we have to hold back. Or there is no damage, and we're going to be refunding the full, you know, security deposit. And, um, but we, but we separate those. The security deposit is not payment against the rentals. It is a separate fee. And so you, you pay the security deposit. If there's no charges, everything is, as it should be, we refund that security deposit in its whole. We don't apply it to the total fee. That's, it's not complicated. Our system just doesn't work that way. And so, um, and so it has been long practice here that we handle security deposits completely on their own. And, and there's policy that, you know, they have to be submitted to us so many days in advance of the event and, you know, those types of things. And I'm going to be talking with you in just a few moments about rentals, rental fees, policies as well. I think we've got some work to do there. Um, and, and so, uh, part of my comments in just a moment is very specific to that. Yes, yes, sir. Uh, so, if, if I can also share with you, so that's our budget as we are moving forward. I provided to you a few weeks back, a preliminary report on June. I provided to you a few weeks back, a preliminary report on June. We are continuing to make entries since that we are finishing out a fiscal year. So we are attending, we're, we're continuing to pay out certain expenditures, there'll be accruals. But I did want to share with you where we finished the year financially. We had seven million, seven hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents in revenue. There could be some revenues that will need to be accrued. And that's not unusual because we typically get some from the municipal association and a few folks that'll come in after July one. So there could be some accruals on the revenue side. But as of June thirtieth and what was posted, or at least what's posted at this point, expenditures of seven million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents, giving us a positive variance of four hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-three cents. Again, the disclaimer is those numbers are subject to audit adjustments and accruals. And, and so don't, you know, my caution is just always, yes, this is the number I was given on July twenty-eighth. That must be the number. It's the only report in our fiscal year that there will be adjustments made to it because it's the year-end report and the auditors will make those adjustments. There'll be some fund transfers, there'll be some accruals posted. It's inevitable, but, but we are anticipating that we hope that all of those accruals are posted no later than the end of August. But because we've now moved forward, even those that will happen, the report will not change. You will see those changes in the audit. And so the audit will show all your fund balances at the beginning of the fiscal year, the end of the fiscal year, and it will show budget to actual in all categories. So I, I just want to remind us that the truest review of year-end is the audit, not the June thirtieth financial report. But this is where we were as of June thirtieth, what we had deposited and what we've received and what we expended. Okay? Very, very good. You, you probably heard us make a few comments last week. We were having some pretty significant internet issues, particularly here in the manor. Our fiber optic line from Town Hall to here was down. If, if you're familiar with fiber optics, the simplest, the simplest way to describe it is, you know, it, it's a transfer of light. Data is transferred through a light wave. And, and when light doesn't shine from one end of the cable to the other end of the cable, there's a problem. And that is exactly what we were experiencing all of last week and some into the week prior to that. Our fiber optic cable was not transmitting data. We were able to get a secondary fiber optic contractor onto our site. I say secondary in not the person that originally installed the equipment. We weren't moving as fast as we needed to move, and so we made arrangements to get another vendor in to look at that. What we discovered in that process is that we have enough capacity bandwidth in that fiber optic cable to handle what we do now. Internet, telephones, broadcasting of these meetings through our channels. We have bandwidth to do the things that we are doing. But there is, but we've made a decision to add additional cameras in the park, and all of those require additional bandwidth. And what we have learned is that the, the demand that we're placing on the system is now greater than the system as it is installed and what we have available to us can support. And, and so what I believe, the mayor and I have had long conversations about this, what we believe is that ultimately we will prob, ultimately we believe we will need to run a, a different fiber optic cable. We need more capacity than the line that is in that conduit gives us. Because we've already made the decision to purchase the equipment, the cameras are out there. We got it, we got it, you know, all this data has to be assembled and it has to be transmitted and stored. And it's, it's from what the technicians have shared with us. It is not our belief that we're going to be able to do that. So the next stage for us is to get pricing. So what does that cost? And, and that's what I'm, you know, that's what we are trying to determine at this point is to spec what we believe is needed and then to get a contract on this. Technology is one of those purchase areas that you are not required under your procurement ordinance to go with the low bidder. And there's a reason for that. Low bid doesn't always give you all the tools that you need to accomplish the task. And so that, that is in no regard in reference to a past project, it's just a path forward. And so as, as I put this out, as the mayor and I get this information out, and, and we're asking people to make proposals to us, it could be that a proposal that is recommended may not be the lowest price proposal because of how we meet our needs. You will be given all of that information when we get to that point. A recommendation will be made and you as a body will tell us how to proceed. But I wanted you to be aware, everything is now up and running, but we're, but we're not, we're not being as efficient as we need to be. And so we brought in some temporary equipment. I'm using some wireless hotspots in this facility to kind of get us over the hump. And so we're, we're up and running and we're doing business that we need to do. But we're going to have to revisit that issue.
And should we not have known about this before the latest camera outfit? I mean, we had it.
I'm going to tell you, I don't know that we would have known.
No, we wouldn't.
I, I really, I really don't know that we would have known.
I mean, we were pigeonholed on using our original vendor because he had the backstory and the front story and the sideways story and was the best.
If, if I may, Mr. Diggers, if I may. It wasn't the camera vendor. It was the, the fiber cable provider that ran the cable. Truthfully, when this other company came in that actually deals with fiber optics that we had to call in to get things back up and running, discovered that that line in there was not the right type of line to run as it has been ran. The company that done it, and we can talk about that, the name offline, they came in to do the trenching. And if you remember, they offered a, a very low cost to do the trenching and run the fiber line. That was done, but that company really did not have the overall experience at running fiber as we discovered later on through this process.
And, and so I've, I've reviewed the, the work order, the purchase order that was approved and the vendor was installing. It's my belief that the vendor installed what was specked. I'm not sure that the specs were correct or there was a, a choice of which cable could have been used. Where, you, 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 you know, you, you, it's just the nature of the beast. Anytime you bring a secondary vendor on your site, almost always there is disagreement between the vendors of how it should have been done. And, and that's just inevitable. I mean, it's all, it's like, it's exactly what I expected was going to happen. But we weren't getting our repairs made and we had to get someone in here to make those repairs. We're, I don't think this is something that we have a long period of time to kind of just work through because I can tell you, we've got cameras that are installed in the park that we're going to be paying for or have paid for that are not going to be operational because we don't have the bandwidth to, to do that. I mean, that's just, so it's a fact that we're just going to have to deal with. And, but I do believe, you know, we'll be able to get some pricing and recommendations on how to proceed. I want to have that reviewed by a secondary, not, not a installer, but a secondary specialist that would say, yes, this is your application, this is what you're doing, this is what has been proposed for you to install. Yes, I believe that will work. And I think our current provider, ATG, that provides our, our services, I think they're very, very capable of doing that piece of it. But, but I think it may have been a disconnect for us when we did the original install. I, I think we put it out to bid, got a price, went with a low bid and.
What was paid for?
We may have gotten what we paid for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Couple of things to make you aware of. One, I, I, our pipeline for residential and commercial development is very, very strong right now. I want to let you know that we have projects that are communicating with us on a regular basis. I, I don't think it's something that we go, oh, you know, where did the avalanche come from? It's just steady. There's good, steady conversation about projects that are ready to, residential, that are ready to go to construction that have been approved in the past. We have other projects that development is looking at, available property and projects that they would like to do. And so they're investigating zoning and land use and all of those things. And so when I refer to the pipeline, I really am talking about that that is either queued to start or that which folks are inquiring about projects that they would like to do. And so it's good, it's healthy, it's healthy on the commercial side as well. But I don't at this point believe that it's overwhelming. It's what I would characterize as just, just good community development. And, and so I'm not, I don't see anything in that that I go, oh, this could be a really horrible project for this community. And then we have processes for how that's reviewed, obviously. Planning commission, zoning reviews and all of those things. But I want you to, but I want to let you know that it's strong and it's continuing to move forward. From a, from an impact perspective of things that, that, that's going to make it onto your radar, we have been advised that Scout Motors is at the stage that they will be bringing in employees that they've made hirings for. And so employees will be starting to do work on the site as well as there will be vendors that have not been here on the site yet that will start coming in as well. We believe Scout Motors and, and their operations and the communications with SC DOT, with the county penny sales tax folks, all of us that monitor transportation here in the area, we believe that it's going to have a, a noticeable impact to the community as that ramps up. They were prepared to start that work next week. I asked them to hold that off for a week to get us past the start of school. I, I, I just didn't want brand-new school operations and a new traffic issue that's going to happen in front of that facility at the exact same time. We were able to work through that and they, and they've been very accommodating for that, for that to occur. And, and so I, I want you to be aware that there will be information that is being released this week. That information will primarily identify that there will be a surge of activity on Blythewood Road and that the way that they're handling this period, and it's as they are constructing the roundabouts to handle the traffic. A couple of things have happened. One, originally you probably saw one crew out there during the day working on the roundabouts. We now have three crews. They are working first, second, and third shifts on the roundabouts to expedite the completion of that project. In the meantime, as that is occurring, they are, they will provide onsite traffic direction. Onsite traffic direction means they're contracting with Richmond County Sheriff's Department to have personnel there that is managing the flow of that traffic. And they will do that during the peak period for their surge in the mornings and their surge in the afternoons, when their people are arriving on the site and when their people are leaving the site. And so we know that that's going to create a surge. And, and until those roundabouts are completed, for the safety of the traveling public, for the convenience of the traveling public, for the operations of the school in that area and the buses that run through there, we've, we've been working for the last about three weeks, coming up with a plan that we think will work well for that. I, I, I just want to communicate to you, the, the, the project and the people who work with and for that project are really working hard to minimize the impact. But here's the fact, there will be impact. So we're working to minimize it, but there will be impact. There will be more people in the morning, in the afternoon, coming on and off of that site because again, they're ramping up for the hire, they're, they're ramping up their hiring, they're putting people in there on a day-to-day basis, and they're bringing in more subcontractors for construction. And so you kind of heard it here first, but, but information will be coming out this week that we will be sharing with, with everyone. And as, as we've kind of communicated with them is, we are not the originator of that information. We don't, we don't make the plan. We don't hire the people to do it, we don't do the construction. But we are impacted greatly and we will communicate through our tools that we have, our website, our social media sites, our communication with our local media. We'll continue to make sure that we're doing everything we can, but that responsibility falls onto the overall project. This is an impact of Scout Motors' construction. And so we're trying to keep accountability where it needs to be and us being a facilitator of getting information to our community. Want to make sure we were on the same page with kind of what's happening with that. And I think the last thing that I would like to share with you is, I, I've been working for the last several weeks. So the question was our, you know, our booking system, our reservation system, communication between that and accounting and all that. I've been, I've been reviewing that now for several weeks. And I feel strongly that, I, I think there are some software improvements that we can make to that overall process. I think that there are, I, I think there's some communication things that we have to work on relative to who's doing what. But the most important thing that I think needs to happen is, it may have been some time, I don't know what that timeframe would be, but I think there may have been some time that there was a comprehensive review of council of all of our established fees, our discounts, our, you know, day-of-week charges, all of those things that go into managing this operation. And, and so what I've asked of the staff here is to, is to make some recommendations back to me on what they believe fees should be for use of facilities during all those things, times. I'm providing feedback on that. I've also provided them with contact information for other communities that have similar types of operations to review how this is done in other places. But our ordinance is very clear that the, the, the fees established for this facility are established by council. And I don't think that a comprehensive fee schedule has, has been brought forward lately and where you're looking at everything. And so I, I, I think it's time for us to do that. And, and I also think that it's time for us to review the policies of, of our operation here as well. And so when I talk about policies, I want to make sure that. Um, and so when I talk about policies, I want to make sure that our town attorney has reviewed our contracts. I want to make sure that what we are using is the most up-to-date, um, that, you know, that protects the town, uh, as it should appropriately do. Um, we want to make sure that our customers, uh, have an expectation of what they're receiving and that we're delivering on those expectations. Uh, and so my, my desire in this is to make sure that we're running this as a very well-oiled machine. Um, and that we know, we know what the fees are, they're published. Yes, there's always, I, I'm, I'm just of the opinion that, um, I, I think there are always exceptions, but we need to understand what the exceptions can be and how, what, how that process works. But we already have some of that in place. Time of year, we have exceptions in our policy for if you book an event less than 30 days. Uh, so discounts are, are provided for in there. And so there are, there are tools that are already there for us. Uh, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. And so what I'd like to ask of council is that I've discovered in my short time with you that if we place that on an agenda with other business of the town, we really can get bogged down and we can get extended in our discussion relative to that. And so I, I would like to ask council's consideration of a workshop session for us to come in exclusively to deal with our fees and our policies and our procedures, uh, regarding the operations for the park and for this facility, the manor. Uh, I, I think that could be helpful for us. I'm not asking you to select a date now. Um, I'm just, I'm really asking your willingness to do that or if you believe we place it on an agenda, put it out there, make sure you've got the information in advance and we discuss that. Uh, but I, but I'll say it's, it's my opinion that I think a workshop might work best for us to stay focused on that issue. And if that's agreeable, perhaps the, the mayor and I can get together. We can start looking at calendars, we can shoot some dates out to you folks and say, you know, could, could this possibly work? Um, you know, but I, but I think that can be very helpful.
Cool.
And it, and it may very well be this doesn't even happen till September. You know, just because we're wrapping up, school's starting and all of those things. But, um, but I, I needed to get a feel for your openness to that process.
Got you. All right, council, any feel of feedback on that? If none, we'll move forward and, uh, we'll send emails out to make sure that we start, um, asking you for availability. Councilwoman Page?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, I do think it would be wise of us to even look at having a workshop on a quarterly basis. Um, you'll see other municipalities that will actually have them on a, on a, um, not a every month frequency, but I think just having that time slot already, um, pinpointed out may do us some good with, um, being able to get through some of these thicker types of, um, topics.
Sure. Sure. I've seen it done lots of different ways and that certainly is, is a way that that can be accomplished. Absolutely. Very good. That's the information that I needed to share with you this evening. I apologize for the length of it, but there's been an awful lot going on. Uh, and so thank you very, very much for allowing me to, to share that with you tonight. And I'm available either now or later. Uh, please note that you can always reach me, uh, individually. Uh, I'm always hanging around after the meeting. So I'm, I'm glad to take questions as part of the meeting and I'm always glad to take those questions, uh, one-on-one. So, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
For the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Driggers. Any further questions for our interim administrator?
Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, the approval of the minutes from the town council regular June meeting, June the 23rd, looking for a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Mayor, make approval, um, a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion made by Councilwoman Page to approve it, looking for a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilwoman Kendrick, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays, ayes have it, thank you. Mr. Driggers, I don't know if anyone has signed up, um, for public comment, but we're now at the public comment portion this afternoon. The public, this portion of the meeting is designated for public comments and is provided by the municipal ordinance. Public comments must be limited to the items on the agenda. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address council. All comments will be entered into the official record and no action will be taken during the, the hearing itself. We don't have any?
Okay.
Thank you, I know. Yes, sir. All right. We have no one signed up. I will pause as I always do to allow the public. Um, if you wish, uh, please approach the mic and just state your name for the record. I'll pause for a second. All righty. Hearing none or seeing no movement. Um, I also want to, um, um, put forth a point of privilege, uh, to have, um, our former mayor, um, former council member Larry Griffin and of course our former mayor Keith Bailey in attendance this afternoon. Appreciate you, sir. Glad to see you up and moving about. All right, at this portion, we'll move to the boards and committee updates. Um, Doco Meadows Park Foundation, Councilwoman Page.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Central Midlands Council Government, myself, nothing to report at this time. Richland County Penny Tax Committee, Councilwoman Kendrick.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually held our meeting a week ago, last Monday night. Um, we were short of a quorum when the meeting began, but enough people joined via Zoom that, that quorum was met. So we were able to conduct business. I will touch on, um, what Mr. Driggers said. There was, uh, some lengthy discussion on Richland Two, S C D O T, the penny tax, Scout Motors and the town of Blythewood as it pertains to Blythewood Road construction, the roundabout construction, community road widening, uh, even over on Wilson, where the railroad has crossed Wilson. Uh, it's, a, as much as we, uh, the penny tax is, is one of those five cogs of that wheel, as much as we tried to avoid, um, what is about ready to happen, I don't think it was avoided. Uh, please don't have road construction during the beginning of school. Please don't have road construction when the bulk of Scout employees are going to hit that site. Um, and S C D O T being behind, Richland Two's schedule has been posted for a very long time. Uh, we were able to get, uh, S C D O T was able to get the railroad exchange put in over spring break last year. That worked very well. Uh, th, this is going to be the perfect storm that is going to be a thorn in Blythewood residents' side. It's all going to converge at the same time. The demand on the Scout site for equipment, the demand on the Scout site for employees and the demand on the Scout site for construction workers, school going back. Um, people avoiding community roads, so they're going over on Wilson Road. So I, I think, just to piggyback on what you said, they were very appreciative of, of Mr. Driggers and the communication the town has put forward. That being said, we, we need to buckle up for one month of pure hell when it comes to traffic. It's, it's going to be unavoidable and every plan was laid down, particularly on the penny side, to keep this from happening. Delays were created for the penny projects, all of them. Uh, and now that we're back up and running on all of those projects almost around the clock, uh, i- it's just going to move us further to the, to the perfect storm. So, that being said, I don't think any one entity of S C D O T or the penny project or Scout is solely to blame, but it's, the hands are dealt at the, at the perfect time. So if you have schoolchildren, if you're trying to get to and from the interstate, if you're trying to get to and from the grocery store, um, i- it's, it's going to be, it's going to be rough for the next month or so. That, that is the bulk of the report. And, and the town's doing a good job putting it out on the website. Here's closures, here's lane, lane changes, uh, et cetera. Uh, they even went so far as to try to delay the lane change on 77, uh, which is going to slow traffic down as you approach Blythewood exits from Columbia. Uh, that could not be delayed either. So, um, I'll be glad to answer questions, but as far as the penny part goes, they're ramping up to get us back on schedule, which adds to the perfect storm, so.
Appreciate that report, sir. And, um, thank you to everyone that has had, um, conversation with, um, different officials, um, to make sure that Blythewood is heard through that process. Um, there's been a lot of conversations across that, that room. And, um, I know my words to, um, those officials, um, were, you should have done this months ago when school got out and you waited until August the 6th to get started. Do us a favor, give us some time to get used to new pat, um, traffic patterns with school. When, when you rev up again and that's to that point of working first, second, and third, um, hit us one time and get it done, um, so we can move on with life. So we'll do our part to make sure everyone is updated. Uh, just follow us on social media, um, sign up for the newsletters and those alerts so we can keep you updated.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments for Councilwoman Kendrick? Councilwoman Page?
Do we have, I know at one time there was a set schedule for the Scout employees and their time of arrival to, um, the site and their time of arrival or departure. Um, has that changed at all? And if not, or if we can get the updated times, could we perhaps maybe post that information to our site as well as like when times, um, for school will start? And maybe through that little bit of information, people can make decisions as to what time they can, you know, um, make adjustments in order to leave their home, perhaps. Maybe that would be helpful.
I think we can comment on that.
From, from a T-PAC side, they, I think they said Scout leaving the facility, that being at five o'clock. Um, now that the traffic light is put up, that is better. And, and particularly on Blythewood Road, uh, because of Muller, uh, we didn't want that sta, we didn't want that staggered, which was our first request, because that's going to push them closer to the exit of school. So let's leave, let's leave that at five o'clock right now with the, with the traffic light, which certainly helps stagger it off the front.
And I got to get a update too from D O T on putting that extra turn signal in on certain mill at that light as well. Um, that will definitely help with the movement of traffic there from the Scout site. All right, any additional questions? I'm going to do something a little unorthodox because I know traffic is always an issue. If it pleases the council, I want to pause and just, if residents have questions that we may, we may not have the answers, but at least we can take it back and research. Maybe it's something we forgot. So I'll pause for a second. Did they give us a number in that?
Yeah, the, the information that'll be shared this week will, uh, give anticipated traffic counts, um, relative to how many of those are employees, how many of those are contractors and what is the movement of, of equipment. Much of their equipment is already on-site. It's now bringing in those subs to start assembly of, of that equipment. So I don't have that information this evening, but, but we will have it shortly.
Yes, sir. Mayor Bailey?
So I have to understand that, uh, Scout and this is, this is through this too. I've talked about traffic flow and terms. I mean, that's what all this is. With that being done, so we don't have a, as a surge, we talk about at a certain time?
We have encouraged, uh, through their traffic consultant, uh, that those communications needed to take place uh, because particularly the bus traffic. My biggest concern, just be personally, my biggest concern was the first week of school. Uh, that's when we're traditionally going to get more car service. Uh, and so the, the, the amount of traffic will be highest during the first week of school, which is kind of traditional. Um, their commitment to us is that that communication would indeed take place uh, with the school district so that the buses were aware of how the patterns were going to be impacted and the timing as well as communication to the parents. So they're asking of the school district, not only should parents get their information from us and D O T and other, other sites, but, but they're asking of the school district to also share that information with car riders particularly and their bus drivers.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Councilwoman Griffin? Yes, sir. We got to get past the first hurdle first, and I know that's been a long-term plan, um, to look back at what that will cause to straighten. I believe you're talking about the straightening of Blythewood and Lanford Road? Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. That is, that is the proposal right now. And that's been one of those lengthy conversations with that developer to try to supplement and plan with us according to that future plan piece there. But that project is not off the ground yet. It's, it's still going through the, um, planning commission right now. I don't know that. I don't know that answer. But we can ask. Yes, sir. I don't, I don't have that answer for that. It is. We can, we can bring in and we can do it on one meeting. Um, the next one in August, we can bring in the H R, uh, folks from Scout to have that conversation and give us an update where they at. And Scout owe that to us as a town anyway. Um, they come in quarterly, um, to give us updates. So we can horn in on that aspect of hiring, whether, how many people are local and what's your plan to attack local hiring? So, Mr. Driggers, let's make sure that we let our Scout contact know that we need H R hiring update focused on local hiring initiatives. Um, but we will, we will get you updates on that as well. The lights are already up, wired in, they need to do the lane adjustments on there. I will add this and then I'm going to close this period. I've been real tough on them about not starting a project and about starting a project and not finishing. We need to finish what we have started. So, and that's to that point as well. I would hate for them to start that project and then it's on standby. So. So we need to make sure that we finish these projects. And we don't zone them out to the point where capacity is, 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 is useless. They don't have the capacity. So I wanna make sure, and that was my words to them. I do remember that on that intersection. My fear is you start it and then it's there and we dealing with a nightmare at that already nightmare intersection. We'll get updates and we'll make sure we put that out when we get those updates. All right, we'll close this comment period. Thank you, members of council and the public. Moving to old business, there is no old business listed on the agenda. We'll move to new business. New business item, item A Cooperative Agreement Buy-in Between Richland County and the Town of Blackwood for the Urban Community, Urban Council Community Development Block Grant. This is an action item. Mr. Driggers, would you please update council?
We were approached by Richland County, the folks that, that managed the Community Development Block Grant, referred to as CDBG, whether or not we would like to participate with them in their county-wide program. We have a couple of options that are available to us. One is we can do our own thing. We are not, and we're nowhere close to being an entitlement designated area. And so we would always be competing on a statewide basis for funds. Not necessarily competing within Richland County, but we would be competing again statewide. Richland County does receive designated CDBG funds. So they're allocated on an annual basis through the federal budget for the use of those funds. They've inquired of us whether or not we would like to, to participate in that program. The mayor has had more of the conversations with the staff on that, on that side. But I can tell you from experience, I have, I have always partnered with a county agency simply because it was always my belief that they, they already have the infrastructure in place. They have a director, they have staff, they have people who do the program. We, we don't. We, we don't do that. And if we were to apply, we would, we would most likely would apply through Central Midlands Council Government is where we would, you know, make those applications through and, and then to the state housing authority and, and those folks. I mean, I can see that you, you may would say, look, we'd rather try things on our own, submit our own projects. Again, my experience has been if I, you know, if I can get an allocation. What I, what I don't have a clear understanding at this point is, is would there be a designated allocation of CDBG funds for the town of Blackwood? Or would we be submitting applications, recommendations, suggestions, suggestions to the county level? Mayor, you may have, they may have answered that question with you, but I do not know the answer.
Yeah, and Paula, they should be including you on that email trail. And I know, I see your name, but on there. We will not get our own allocation of funds. We still submit to the county and their approval of projects. The biggest part of this is, is we don't have to have higher staff to manage this program. I think that's the biggest takeaway, is the management of this program and the grant, which is a whole nother beast that we're not in position to really deal with. But through their portal, our residents would be able to apply for these programs through the county, such as first home, first-time home buyers monies that the county allocates through these programs. We could petition the county for certain things under this. But essentially, this takes us out for the back burner. And the knowledge that they have given me is that they do run into citizens in the town limit from town, time to time, and they do not qualify because we do not participate. And according to their records, we've been part of the state, but we have never petitioned or tried to do this program. So it seems applicable to just unilaterally let the county do it. We can push and force them into trying to commit some funds, but they do not commit allocation to municipalities in the county directly.
And that's the biggest difference from what my experience has been is my former city, we were, we were budgeted. And so we, we had about a half a million a year annually that was coming directly to projects specific to our community. And so that's the primary difference. Just handle a little bit different here. But they're, they're complex federal programs. And again, my experience has been people who do this all the time are in a better position to manage those types of projects simply because of the audits that go along with them, the requirements that go along with them. Almost every project that's done is gonna require Davis Bacon, you know, pay obligations and, and so those types of things. So I, I will certainly say I don't see a reason that we would not want to do it unless we wanted to do something on our own.
So I just had a, yeah, I just had a question. So it looks like this would be effective October first of twenty twenty-six if we were to participate? And, and it would not end, our participation would be through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Mm-hmm. That's our qualifying year, twenty-six to twenty-eight.
Okay. And the, like, sixth paragraph, it indicates that it would end September thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. So I guess twenty twenty-eight goes all the way to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine because it's a federal program. So, yeah. So with that being said, do we have a little bit more time that we could research this a little bit more to have an understanding of what, what, what are the categories in which folks, our residents would be able to apply for? Or just gain a little bit more knowledge about what is already being provided through the county through this grant and how we might be able to partic, you know, our citizens would be able to participate? And not to say that, it's just gaining a little bit more time to, to review and find out.
I believe the answer to that is yes, you could take more time. But I think to get in the October one, twenty twenty-six cycle, we're needing to make a decision now. If we're not prepared to make a decision, we would defer that until the October one, twenty twenty-seven cycle.
And to your, to your point too, Ms. Page, the county would roll out where they are with this program and the program, the availability to the public. So for instance, like the cab would have direct communication to put these programs out. And we'll be, we'll have that communication too to publish as well. Historically, to their data points, we really haven't qualified in this area for these types of pro, what they use the money for, let me put it that way. What they use it for, there are certain income restrictions and pieces that go along with this program as well. So it's just giving access to the, the availability for folks to apply for these funds.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Just one last thing. And, you know, should we explore, I mean, should we go ahead and commit? And, and then we find and we explore that we're not gaining as much as what we feel like we could independently? Then, Mr. P, would we not be able to then leave that program and enter it on our own in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-seven? Is that something that we would be able, we would have?
I've, I've read, I've read through this agreement one time. And I, I, I'm not sure that we would be able to withdraw or terminate while the three-year qualification period is in effect. And that's in, that's on page three in the third full paragraph down. And the, the, the proposed agreement also indicates that, I mean, so it looks like we're locked in for that three-year period. And there are automatic renewal provisions for successive three-year qualification periods unless we give notice that we're going to withdraw before that, before that new period, before that new period begins. So, yeah, I think to answer your question, I mean, I think once, once this is entered into, it looks like it, looks like we're locked in for three years.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir, Councilwoman McKendrick.
Just a couple of questions, either for you or our attorney or Mr. Driggers. As I read through this, it's, right now, Blackwood can't participate. We're not participating in any level of...
We are eligible to participate at the state level. We, we are currently in the state program.
But not in the county program?
Correct.
Because we have an opted-in.
Correct.
So the CDBG for Blackwood, at most levels, even though it spells out in here, we, we, what we can't do. But those are some pretty high or low, whichever term you wanna use, thresholds that our growth, our numbers, everything points to we're moving in the other direction. Not lowering the income.
Right, but, but do let me say, not all projects that are funded through CDBG are low to moderate income. There are programs in CDBG for recreation. And, and so it qualifies. There are programs, there are program dollars available through CDBG for senior programming, senior activity. And that's automatic regardless of income level. And, and so, yes, low to moderate income is, is a qualifier. Census track qualifier, senior qualifier, recreation qualifier.
So you're, you're kinda speaking to my point. If we can't participate in Richland County now, this doesn't alleviate us from still participating in the state program?
Yes, it does.
It does.
It does.
And so that being the case, if the three-year, if we enter into this with Richland County, now we can't go to the state program?
For three years, you may not apply independently for a state CDBG grant.
And then I always have a, a major hiccup over auto renewals of agreements like this. I, I, I just don't, I don't care for auto renewal clauses. I think it should come back before council. So there's gonna be different people sitting up here, there's gonna be different ma, I mean, three years is a long time before something auto renews and it's not on anybody's radar. What, what would, I mean, what would be your recommendation? Back out of the state program and enter into Richland County's or?
I think you're more likely to do programming in Blackwood through the county program than I think you would be in a competitive environment at the state level. Right, because someone has to manage it. And we don't have that expertise or staff to do that. And so we, we, we would have to take a percentage of whatever project we're doing and, and award it. You know, there, there are, there are lots of different way, you know, CDBG can be used for first-time home buyers. So that's, that's a great program. People are very familiar with it, it's a great program. But I'll tell you, I use the program more for housing rehabilitation for low to moderate income. And, and so for us, we're not, if we're not doing a neighborhood, anyone that would qualify under LMI, low to moderate income, if they would, if they meet that criteria and they're in the town limits of Blackwood and we have an agreement to do that, they, they would qualify. And that doesn't mean there's enough funding to do everybody, but at least we now have the chance to get House A, House B, House C, House D, they may be in different places, that we can go in and help a resident who needs to re-roof their house, needs to rebuild the porch. It is, it is, it's not, it's not a safe sanitary situation that we can use CDBG to make improvements to that. By going through them, they then are gonna send the building inspector. They're going to send, you know, their accounting is gonna handle all of the processes at the federal funds. We're not doing that. They're doing that on our behalf. But as of today, they can't come into the town of Blackwood and do a project. They ju, they can't because they don't have an agreement with us.
So, Councilman McKendrick, if I may, the auto renewal clause with, if, if that is striking out, stricken out, is this something that you feel comfortable with?
Good question. Let me, let me add this. I don't know that we have, I mean, we could certainly ask, can that be stricken in this? This may be a federal boilerplate CDBG agreement that the feds require it in its fashion. I, I don't know the answer to that.
But if that's the, if that's the case, staff could certainly, staff could certainly put a tickler to say, bring it back and say, this is getting ready to renew.
It would be the same way that we monitor bonds that are issued of us during construction of a, of a neighborhood, is that we, we keep ticklers on when those bonds would expire so that we're going back and saying, hey, the work's been done or the work hasn't been done. Bond needs to be reissued. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion from members of council? Hearing none, I'll be looking for a motion to approve entering into the community. I'll be looking for a motion to approve as recommended this afternoon. All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Motion made by Councilwoman Fripp to approve, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman McKendrick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, thank you. All righty. Next item on the agenda is executive session, through South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy. We'll be discussing three items this afternoon. The first one is receipt of legal advice, subject to attorney-client privilege, be given by our attorney, town attorney. Second item is discussion of personnel matters, be given by our interim administrator. And then the third item will be discussion and possible action of contractual matters regarding financial service, finance service agreements. I'll be looking for a motion to enter into executive session. That's, it'll be a personnel matter? That is for both, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Well, on personnel, I mean, again, personnel is not really something you can...
Okay, all right, well, okay. Thank, thank you, ma'am, we're going to go ahead, I'll be looking, go ahead.
I'm glad, more specifically, it'll involve personnel in our manor operations, actually two personnel matters relative to the manor operation. No, I apologize, all three are relative to manor operations. So, it's personnel matters relative to the operations and the individual personnel with, that operate here at the manor.
Okay, thank you. May I ask a question about the third one? Is that, is that a contract that is on this?
It's a contract that I'm asking council's consideration that has been proposed.
We're negotiating.
Yes, we're negotiating.
Okay, thank you. I'll be looking for a motion to enter into executive session. Motion made by Mayor Proton, looking for a second.
Second.
Second made by Councilwoman Page, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any ayes? Ayes have it, thank you.
We got five minutes.
All right, I will be looking for a motion to reconvene.
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion here, none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. All right, council, are there any items requiring a vote following executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton.
This motion is in relation to item A and the motion reads as follows. A motion to authorize the town attorney to resolve a personnel matter up to the amount discussed in executive session.
Thank you, sir. Motion made. Looking for a second.
Second.
Second made. Any discussion here, none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? As have it. Thank you. I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion here, none all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have a good night.